Number fifteen from the State City Council meeting, please rise for the plaid. Chair, would you leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wirehall.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Yeah. All right, we have before you the minutes from the November first, 2022, State City Council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. I apologize.
That's okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wirehall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank permission for visitors to speak. Seeing none, we have communications and petitions.
I have two letters that came November second. First one's from Melanie Ellis. Good evening, council members. I just read that the Council Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow, November second at four o'clock, to discuss reducing the income tax credit given to those who work out of town. I feel this meeting is being held at this time of day to keep those who work out of town from attending as most are still working or traveling home at that time of day. I think it's a convenient way I do not hear from those who work out of town. Shame on the Finance Committee for that. I have lived in Bucyrus almost my entire life. I have raised my family here. I own my home, pay property taxes, pay city utilities, and support our businesses whenever possible. Penalizing myself as well as others by reducing the tax credit does nothing but encourage those of us who already had to leave city limits to make a living, to move to other communities. I worked within Bucyrus city limits for a number of years before deciding I could provide better for my family with employment elsewhere. I consistently monitor job availabilities. To my, and to my knowledge, there is little or no opportunity for me to gross my current salary in our community. Jobs are leaving the city, and the city isn't growing jobs at the same rate, especially higher wage jobs. What is being done to bring these same level jobs to our community? What are we doing in order to make Bucyrus a desirable place to live, besides building another park and planting more trees? Personally, with measures such as this, I only see you driving individuals and families further away. I ask that you consider the negative impact this will have on our citizens, their families, and inevitably our community in opposed reducing the income tax credit for those working outside the city. If revenue is an issue, then shouldn't all citizens of Bucyrus share the burden? Or better yet, shouldn't the city look to tighten their budgets like the rest of us have done these last few years as costs are rising? The second letter is from Stephanie Clayton. Good evening, council. The state of the city's speech is where we all heard of Mayor Reeser's claim to agree with him, stating that last year a small levy, 1.25% tax increase was proposed upon the park system, and now Mayor Reeser's proposal to reduce the amount of tax credit allowed to those who work outside the city limits. The income deemed necessary despite the 14% increase in income tax revenue a high since 2016. Throughout the speech, we hear of legacy and preserving history, making Bucyrus a beautiful place to live. That, an attractive, safe, and friendly city, attracts homeowners to want to establish lives and grow families. While the statement is not untrue, it seems detrimental to live above our means in the city by introducing so many parks that we need more income to support without being able to support the original parks we have had in the community for years. Also mentioned by Reeser, the possibility of a new parks and recreations position the taxpayers would need to support. Jobs drive community. Jobs drive revenue. The plan of making Bucyrus beautiful without plans to bring in jobs is like trying to prevent a ship from sinking by emptying the water without plugging the leak first. We have had multiple empty industrial buildings, BPT and GE, in need of business to grow our jobs and maintain those buildings. In addition, with constant development of automotive, the idea of Timken staying open long term is not realistic as the number of bearings utilized is dropping due to the popularity of electric vehicles. In the state of the city, we have one mention of job creation. We are putting plans together to attract spinoff business from the Intel plant. What does this mean? Will those plans be shared? When will they be shared? How serious are the plans? What can our city do to keep jobs in this town and attract new businesses now? The premise to justify the reduction of the tax credit is that Mayor Reeser could only find one municipality in 50 miles that offers the same credit in similar cities that have 2.5 income tax. However, reaching the topic, Dublin 2% data 1.65 also offers 100% credit. Crestline offers a 1.5 tax credit on 2%, and the rest is stated with 1% tax credit on 2%. The mean city income tax in our county is 2%. In addition, Fosteria does offer 1% tax credit to their 2% income tax requirement, which was stated they do not by Mr. Reeser. Read at Ohio dot com. For the city's not offering the tax credit, Sandusky income tax is 1.25, Upper Sandusky's income tax is 1.25%, Kenton City income tax is 1.5%, and the city's offering 50% tax credit. Mansfield's mean income, $50,485 taxed at 2%. Yaline's mean income is $50,732 taxed at 2%. And we have Bucyrus a mean income of $41,314 taxed at 2%. Instead of asking the question of how we can make Bucyrus more attractive and friendly, we need to start asking why people are seeking employment outside the city of Bucyrus. When Mayor Reeser stated that there are plenty of jobs, as a quality engineer in Ohio, the average salary is $71,279, and from the city in which I work, the average is $69,896. The average in Bucyrus is $45,678. That's a 35% disparity from state average. In Ohio, the average production worker makes $15.99 per hour in Bucyrus. That average is $13.36 an hour, a 16.44% disparity to the state average. Bucyrus needs jobs, just not any jobs. We need good jobs, good paying jobs with benefits to match. We do not need to punish those who are working hard to support their families.
Does anybody else have any communications? Look, I'd like to share, excuse me. All right, moving on, standing, can we any reports, plating?
Nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
Nothing to report, Madam President.
Finance?
Nothing new to report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Nothing, please.
Okay. There's nothing to report. To the board of city officials, Mr. Mayor.
I did, I caught that a little bit, I had to retract my report, but GE building is, just to rebut that, GE building has been bought, been bought months ago, they're refurbishing. Thank you. GE building has been bought, and the owners are refurbishing it, and will be actively seeking tenants. BPT was bought, it's not empty. Those two buildings that were cited have both been bought, and one is already filled. We aren't opening any new parks. I don't know where that comes from. Now, that park was, that's a bicentennial park, it was not even, has anything to do with the city. And the proposal I made to help properly fund the parks, like about every other city around here, was made a year ago, I think it was April, almost two years ago. And, you know, we haven't said anything, we dropped the idea about an income tax way back then, so I'm not sure what else there was. But there was a lot of things in there that were not true, so I just, typically I don't respond to those kind of letters, but that was, there were some good points in it, and you know, obviously, you know, but I just wanted to respond to what I heard that wasn't true. Okay, back to the mayor's report here. I want to use the report to talk about the events of last week and how they pertain to the future security and growth of Bucyrus. We had some interesting events. I would call them ironic that they happened on the same day, Veterans Day, and of course with the police incident we had with the shooting. I'll start with the Veterans Day events. They began early in the morning with breakfast being served and to thank and honor our veterans. At one o'clock, we had really a nice gathering at St. Paul's, thanks to all who put that on. It was incredible, honoring Harry Martin. And the keynote speaker was a Bucyrus native general, Norman Smith, who gave a great, by phone, he's almost 90 and he lives in Virginia, but he, everything was so good. And the readings of the letters, the commendation letters, and the letters of his comrades-in-arms about Lieutenant Martin's sacrifice, as well as Harry Truman's letter awarding the Medal of Honor were just very poignant. So, in the evening, some of you were probably at the event at the high school, Crawford County Veterans Hall of Fame. If you've never been there, Aaron and I saw there, and her mom, it was a nice event as always. It's a really fun, the bands were excellent too, and all the speakers were good. It's always great to honor all the veterans in attendance, and especially those who were inducted into the Hall of Fame. In between the events, we experienced something that we do not want to ever see in this town, and two of our officers were involved in a shooting, when they were fired upon by someone who had been in the shooting spree in other communities, and then chose Bucyrus to come and drive through. He chose the wrong city, I will say that. He chose the wrong police force to challenge. Our guys showed incredible bravery and professionalism, then he apprehended the subject. It could have, I've seen the dash cam video, it could have been much, much worse. We are so fortunate that it turned out as it did, and thanks to, thanks to our police, they just did a fantastic job. Those guys put the citizens' safety ahead of their own safety, and quite possibly, if the guy would continue driving other communities, you never know what would happen. So, it all stopped right here. So, we can't thank those guys enough for their exceptional heroism, as well as to our entire PD, who puts their lives on the line every day. But it's clear the circumstances have changed for police departments in Bucyrus, as well as for every other community, I think, in the state and probably throughout the country since the George Floyd incident. And we are going to have to respond creatively to the current challenge that we face in order to have our community survive and thrive. I think the ones that do that are going to be the ones that are going to have, going to attract new residents, going to attract jobs. The issue of funding for the PD has been brought to your attention, I mean Joyce and I both have, and, you know, it's just, it's just an issue. We are going to have to pay them more. I mean, we gave them a new contract with a raise, and, but it's just, it's not going to be enough. I can tell you that's, in order to retain our officers and attract officers, we are going to have to pay more commensurate what surrounding communities are paying, or are we going to continue to lose them? Right now, we're short-staffed. We can't go any lower, so. So, I'm asking you, you know, and Joyce I know has asked you to make a decision for increased revenue, whatever you're going to do, make it this year. The issue is those who work in the city and work, live in the city, work in the city, those who live in the city work outside the city, those who live outside the city and work inside the city, all benefit from a fully staffed, fully trained police department. Every one of them. And I have full confidence in the ability of Chief Ostenheimer and Safety Service Director Wagner to lead us through this most challenging period, but your help is needed to ensure the safety of all Bucyrus citizens, as well as those who visit us and travel through our community. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Do you want to, do you guys like the service?
Yes, yes, that's why I ran and got quickly. Jeff has been ill, so, this, Audra Schiffer I think has the one referral, she's going to bring that up. But last week, we met with the Ohio EPA regarding waterline expansion programs, the programs we have coming up Stetser Road, as well as Sulfur Springs and Osceola in the next couple of years. And we talked about funding opportunities, both in loans and forgivable loans, as well as grants. Had a really good meeting with them, so. We also met with the county commissioners about who goes out to bid, and so we've got that all worked out. We will be reaching back out to city council to revise our original resolution. That was going to be the county commissioners going out to bid, but since now the cost is going up quite a bit, City of Bucyrus will be the one applying for the grants, so we will want to refer that, to talk about that in council. We also met with the FAA for annual meeting, another good meeting. We talked about short-term goals, long-term goals. Our long-term goal is to apply for a grant to build a new terminal that's needed. So, there's money coming down for the next four years, $100 million. And we are going to hopefully get some of those. Now, unfortunately, we are in competition with a lot of other airports throughout the country, but we are going to do our best to secure that grant. Leaf pickup continues until the end of the month. Please collect all your leaves in the tree lawn and not in the street. We met, Border Control met Monday. We awarded the Mary Street Storm Separation Project. I went to Crawford Construction with work to begin later this year, and we will finish up sometime in the spring of 2023. And Jeff has a note here about the police department. He said, "We are very proud of our police department. This Friday's incident brings home to all the importance of having a skilled police department. The shooting incident that took place on Charles Street could have been tragic if not for the bravery of our officers. We often take for granted the service and professionalism of our PD, and we should not forget that they put their lives on the line for the citizens of Bucyrus every time they put on the uniform. We extend our deepest thanks to those officers involved and to our entire staff for their teamwork, professionalism, and bravery." And that's it for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
Yes, yes, apologize. I don't know if you're prepared to answer. I got a phone call from a resident that was asking on the leaf pickup. Are we utilizing overtime for that? Because I've noticed them out later in the evenings on the weekends.
No, we have been out on the weekends, I don't know why. No, I don't know.
They were out 5:30 one night.
Well, okay, but through the week, yes, they have.
Well, the weekends, I don't.
Staying later to try to get it caught up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we need to wait for Ms. Schiffer to come back and answer that, or. Yeah, we're, you know, well, I don't think anyone's been on the weekend, but I'm not 100% sure. We are, we're short-staffed. And, and we want to get those leaves picked up before they freeze because they're really difficult. So, yeah, they're doing a little bit of overtime. I can give the answer for you on the weekend, if that's the case, so. All right, thank you. Okay, sure.
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor? Mr. Law Director.
So, last meeting, we talked about the designated outdoor refreshment area and preparing this legislation to make it permanent, which we discussed at committee. The actual legislation which we passed last time talked about having a public hearing, so council would need to set a public hearing prior to passing permanent legislation or any legislation moving forward, so I would request council to do that at some point tonight. The Civil Service Commission met, I don't know, I think it was last Monday, maybe?
Wednesday.
Yeah, last Wednesday. They all run together. Concerning lateral transfers into the fire department and the police department, the fire department and the police department both have, well, the fire department has a memorandum of understanding which will be incorporated into their next contract once that is approved, and then the fire department has it in their union contract which would allow outside officers to apply and be hired into our departments without first sitting for the civil service exam and all of those ancillary issues, which we are hoping would expedite hiring into our services. But in order to do that, we need legislation which would allow lateral transfers to occur into those rather than the traditional civil service process, and so I would refer that to the health and safety, or I need a referral, for lateral transfers to go to the health and safety committee. As the mayor briefly talked about, the county has basically given us, or will give us their portion of the ARPA funds that was allocated to us for the waterline projects, I think specifically the Nevada waterline project. He can speak more to that if you have questions. But to do that, we have to pass as council a procurement policy for the American Rescue Plan Act, so that we're in compliance with federal law and regulation as it pertains to procurement for materials and contractors and things to that effect when awarding bids and contracts with that federal money. And so I would need a referral to the Finance Committee to prepare legislation, or ask to prepare legislation, for a procurement policy as well as legislation adopting that policy. And so I think I said it, but that would come from the Finance Committee. And I think it's for the Nevada project. Any other projects or just?
We're going to need for all of them.
For all of them?
And Stetser, as well as Sulfur Springs, and Hospital Extension, Route 30 Extension.
But we would just need one procurement policy for all of our ARPA funds received from the county.
Yes, yes.
Bingo.
How do you want that worded?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to refer the need to create a procurement plan and adoption of such plan for the ARPA funds for the waterline projects to finance.
I'll second that.
Bingo.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to refer the issue of lateral transfers to the health and safety committee. So, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, with a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
And one last item, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request that, in accordance with giving a 30-day notice, to allow 15 days for the clerk to prepare. We have a council meeting on Tuesday, December 20th. I would like to request a public hearing at 6:00 that evening for the DORA, as required to hold.
What was that date again?
That would be Tuesday, December 20th at 6:00 P.M. So, one hour prior to our meeting. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have two referrals from the Safety Service Director, the Mansfield Street Bridge Sewer Separation for an emergency to service and finance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also have the Lynn Lair Package Plant Appropriations for Repair.
So moved.
To service and finance.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm currently working on figuring the appropriations, transfers, and reductions needed to balance this year's budget. The majority of the issues are in the general fund and the safety levy, as we have been telling you since February. The last weeks of the year are a constantly moving target, and it is difficult to predict overtime, especially after our incident last Friday. So, I'm trying to plan ahead so that we can get through and not have to have emergency meetings in the end of December. So, I'll do my best to have the total breakdown for the finance meeting Thursday evening. And then we also will need, it's already been referred, I believe, from the Safety Director, an additional appropriation in the county sewer maintenance fund, and this is for the repairs to the package plant at Lynn Lair, and that'll be for $32,000. So, hopefully no other budgetary items come up, but if they do, I'll bring them to you on Thursday.
So, I have a referral for appropriations, transfers, and reductions to finance.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. In your packet, you have the treasures report. May I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have anything from either of the chiefs?
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Allowing time for visitors' input on the standing and special committee reports and city officers' reports. Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Ordinance 50-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022, by increasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $475 within the police department category within the program, one, security of persons and property sub-paragraph within the general fund, and by decreasing the current balance in the capital outlay line item by $19,475 within the lands and buildings category, and increasing the current balance in the refunds line item by $10,000 within the administration category, increasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $3,000 within the law director category, and also increasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $6,000 within the civil service category, with all line items, all categories being within the program seven, general government sub-paragraph within the general fund and declaring an emergency. And, do I read the second one?
Now, read this now.
I need a motion to suspend the rules, specifically 111.11 to allow for ordinance 51-2022 to be brought forward for a first reading herein.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance 51-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022, by decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by $7,200 within the waterworks administration category, and increasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by $7,200 within the waterworks administration category within the waterworks sub-paragraph within the waterworks fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, I have a motion to accept these as a first reading.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any member of the general public would like to comment on the first readings of legislation presented? Seeing none?
This has been the rule, we're going to take a roll call.
A roll call vote?
Just go back.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. McKeever. Will you roll call vote that, please? Do we have to do each of these separately?
No, just the one, we're suspending the rule.
Suspend the rule from 51, which is from 2022.
And then we accept them as a first reading?
Then you can accept them, just to suspend the rule.
So, they would need the different motion than the original motion?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, but first, Mr. Myers made a motion, and Mr. McKeever made a second to suspend the rule.
Yes.
Specifically 111.11, to allow for 51-2022 to be presented today without first having been referred and come back out of committee. And so first, we need to take a roll call vote on that.
Okay, then we already read it.
Then we'll re-read it.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. So, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And now, you would have to read it again, now that it's been properly brought and forwarded forward.
Ordinance number 51-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022, by decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by $7,200 within the waterworks administration category, and increasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by $7,200 within the waterworks administration category within the waterworks sub-paragraph within the waterworks fund and declaring an emergency.
So, now I'm going to ask for...
Yeah, you can accept both.
So, okay, so now both of them have been, a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor again?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bingo.
Bingo. All right. Public participation. Okay. Referring back to your originating committee, we have proposed ordinance 50-2022, referred back to Finance.
51 may not be approved back, because it was brought...
That's correct, that's correct. That's full counsel, all right. So, committee report on pending legislation. Finance?
Proposed ordinance 50-2022. Finance is favorable to the transfers. Should I do the other one as, as full counsel is favorable to it?
You can, if you would like.
Okay, yeah. Full counsel is favorable to proposed ordinance 51-2022, the transfers in the waterworks.
Further consideration, pending legislation, ordinance number 50-2022, transfers for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 50-2022. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, and a second by Mr. McKeever.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 50-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance number 50-2022 is duly adopted. With regard to resin...
The ordinance.
Yep. Ordinance number 51-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 51-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, and a second by Mr. Wireball.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 51-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance number 51-2022 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business anybody would like to address?
I do want to say we will have our open projects list, the plating, to try to close a lot of them on Thursday, that have been taken care of, or refer some back to some other committees.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Do we have any newer miscellaneous business to bring forward?
No.
We have no worries. Absent. We have referrals already passed. Mansfield Street Bridge and Sewer Separation for emergency Lynn Lair Package Plan Appropriations for Repair, is that an emergency?
That'll be decided when we get out of committee.
In committee. Procurement policy for ARPA funds to finance lateral transfers to health and safety, and appropriations transfers and reductions to finance. Does anybody have any other referrals? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.